Okay, thank you. Uh, the next matter on the agenda, fifteen fifteen Washington Street. I'm gonna recuse myself from that and have a choice.
Madam Chair, Glenn Doherty is here on behalf of Fox Rock Properties.
Sure. Welcome. So this is application fifteen fifteen Washington Street for a minor modification to a special permit.
Oh, let me get the file.
Let me see.
The last thing in the pack. Um, we have some very large plant, actually what Mr. Doherty has up on the board, and the board's packet is an exhibit of the new drainage improvements in the bottom left-hand corner of that plant.
Yep. But if you... I think he'll turn on the microphone when you're talking.
Okay.
So you can use either one.
Either one?
Yep.
That one's better.
Alright.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Glenn Doherty. I'm a civil engineer with Tetra Tech representing Fox Rock Realty for the fifteen hundred campus at fifteen hundred Washington Street. We were here before your board in mid-May and received a modification to the special permit, and since that time, one of the conditions was to do soil evaluation testing for, back in May, we had proposed some recharge of roof drainage on the north side of the building, fifteen fifteen. In that area there, where the green is, with Cindy O'Connell from the DPW Stormwater Division accompanying me, we both witnessed that the soils were just not suitable for infiltration for recharge at all. There was shallow ledge and there was lots of fill material. So we've revised our plan, which was approved in May, to find suitable soils that are, that will provide infiltration, and that would be down here in the south, southwest corner of the site. In the blue, there's, there's a parking lot that exists today, but it's been gated off for quite some time. It's not actively used, and it needs a lot of rehabilitation, and Fox Rock wants to rehabilitate this parking lot that's been fenced off and gated off. It would provide one hundred and twelve parking spaces. It requires some minimal site grading to make sure the drainage all works, but we're putting in two catch basins tied together with a water quality unit, a water quality inlet at the entrance, and we found suitable soils to do infiltration recharge using Storm Tech SC seven forty chamber system at the entrance to the parking lot here. We actually were able to slightly decrease the amount of impervious pavement from the existing to what will be proposed by shaping the parking lot a little bit, so there's no increase in runoff, and where there's none today, we're, we're treating storm water and we're providing some recharge. And in addition, besides deleting the, the Storm Tech chambers up here, we are retaining the previously proposed and approved water quality units that, that service the rest of the campus.
Alright, great, thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just ask staff for their quick overview on the modification and anything outstanding on your end?
Yep, if I may, Madam Chair, just to add to what Glenn had provided for the board, we had been working with Fox Rock and Tetra Tech kind of going over the conditions. They've started internal work. There were several other things in the approval that required an inventory and cleaning of the drainage system, which has been done. They've inventoried the entire parking lot and provided us with a phased repaving plan and curbing repair plan as well, and then the situation related to the storm water is explained. This parking area is in significant disrepair and there's trees coming up in the pavement and really could use some, some sprucing up. So, an opportunity came about to add the infiltration down in this area, and while this particular portion of the, I'll call it the campus, isn't on the same exact property as fifteen fifteen, it's, it's essentially draining to the same sort of design point and outletting in the back of the site. So, in the staff report, I've gone through the conditions related to the drainage system, made some very small modifications, obviously carrying over the requirements of the operations and maintenance plan to this portion of the system as well, and then a condition, an extra condition in the event that Fox Rock sells five twenty-five, that part of that sale is the ongoing maintenance requirements and conditions contained in this particular decision related to that storm water improvement in, in parking area. The staff has no other comments and supports the proposal as submitted.
Okay, great, thank you. Member Baker, do you have any comments or questions?
Um, so really the extra parking is not really needed for the design for the actual building, it's just extra add-on parking you're doing for more retention, or?
Um, correct. It's, it's not necessary to meet the parking requirements for the overall campus, but as Melissa just said, and the parking lot is there, it just has fell into a condition of complete disrepair. So Fox Rock wants to have that extra parking, we're not adding impervious to it, and it'll provide good storm water management, quantity and quality control.
And you already have updated site plan with vegetation and what you're putting in for new trees or plantings and what?
Yes, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I forgot to mention that, yes. That was also done, Mr. Baker.
That was, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, no, no more questions?
Thank you. Member Downey, do you have any comments or questions?
I don't have any.
Um, Member Arena, do you have any comments or questions?
No, good to go, Chairman.
Great. Um, Member McComme, do you have anything?
So the new area here, what has it been used for if it wasn't used for parking? Just kind of like, uh, put your, put the snow removal there and hopefully the water collects there, or?
Not even, it's been gated off from any...
It's been gated off.
Correct.
If, if I may, um, previous to Mr. Doherty's involvement with the property, when flatly owned the property and the previous tenants, this area was heavily used for tractor trailer storage. They would back the tractor trailers in and take the truck off and sort, we used to call it the tractor trailer graveyard, actually. The whole entire thing was used for tractor trailer storage containers for one of the businesses that happened to be on the property. And it, my guess is when that tenant left, that area was no longer utilized.
Okay. So, so all of the existing parking is, you're, you still want to use that? This is, this help, just helps you to solve the drainage issue, and you're gonna improve the parking lot and make it accessible?
That, that's right. It, it gives the campus additional parking above and beyond what the zoning bylaw requires, and because, because the pavement is there...
Yep.
It just needs to be regraded, repaved, and storm water devices added to it, they want to get this done.
And you said the coverage ratio is gonna go up slightly? You're gonna have more green space, no? It's gonna go down?
Impervious surface for, from exist, this existing footprint of impervious is being slightly decreased because we're, right now, right now it's just a rectangle. We're not expanding the rectangle, but we're creating some landscape, you know, divider islands between the rows, so it's a slight decrease in impervious.
Okay. Okay, I have nothing else, Madam Chairman.
Alright, I don't have any further questions or comments, so we're just looking to approve the minor modific, or motion to approve the minor modification.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Alright, does anybody wanna make a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. At seven fifteen, we'll start the scheduled public hearings. I'm just gonna give the Chair a second to join us again.
The next matter we'll take up is the Asbeld forty Bowditch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The request for Asbeld is for forty Bowditch Street. The applicant was Stephen Zaboski. On March twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, claim for granted approval for a grading permit with findings and conditions. This decision allowed for the reconfiguration of an undersized lot to provide support for the construction of a single-family dwelling. The project included involved clearing, cutting and filling with an import of two hundred seventy-five cubic yards. In addition, as part of this approval, there was a minor drainage system installed at the back portion of the lot underneath the patio. Attached to this report are pictures of the lot that were taken last week on Thursday. It has built per, it has been built per the approved plans, and attached with your report is an Asbeld plan.
So they satisfied everything?
Correct, yes, they've satisfied all conditions.
Have Baker any questions?
No questions.
No, sir.
Uh, no questions.
Have a choice of the questions?
No question.
Could I read the conditions to be survived?
Okay, do we have the order?
We have several conditions recommended to be survived. Conditions one, condition five, condition twelve, condition twenty, condition twenty-two, condition thirty-one, condition thirty-six, condition thirty-eight, and condition forty. So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If I may, very quickly, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to give the board a quick update. As you know, there has been significant, well, there was significant progress, I should say, on rectifying the issues that the board had spoke about through the spring, and there was a nice pace and, and things were moving, and things have slowed down significantly, in my opinion. I, I've reached out to Mr. Clemmons at the, before the last meeting, but we had a quorum issue, so they did not provide the information, and basically the outstanding items are the HBA screening for the dumpster. He has informed me that that is going to be completed by the end of next week. The sidewalk on Independence Ave, there is a plan that has been prepared, I've urged him to get the sign off from DPW, need the sidewalk in before the wintertime. Some additional landscaping out in the front, this board had directed him to work with one of the neighbors on Holm Street. My understanding is they were working well together, but nothing has really happened, so I'm looking to reengage that particular discussion. The landscaping plan for the restoration of the land at Independence Manor, that plan was, was required to be submitted in May, I've yet to see it. I've asked him to submit it by Friday of this week, next, in the following week, we'd get the okay from Independence Manor. I'd like that landscaping installed by the end of the month, they, they need to plant that this season. And then the last item is the reconstruction of Oak Grove Terrace. My understanding is they're working through the Quincy, which that road is jurisdiction, DPW. There's an, an issue with an injector pump that needs to be repaired in the street, so that work has been somewhat delayed, which is understandable and acceptable. The other thing I want to talk to the board about this evening, and I have put them on notice that, or I would like to put them on notice with your permission, we've been issuing certificates of occupancy, we've been accepting bonds, however, I would like to cap that at fifteen certificates until these, these things are resolved. I, I really don't want to get too far ahead. So with the board's permission in the form of a motion to just accept these comments this evening and to hold to the fifteen units if the work isn't progressing. This stuff gets done, then that's fine, but we've gotta try to, you know, keep the pace going here. Winter's coming and we're not going another year.
Yep.
Yep.
It's been a number of years already. Have Baker any questions?
No questions.
Or Downey any questions?
No.
Are you in any questions?
No questions.
Okay, any questions?
Didn't we put that, Melissa, didn't we have that, in terms of the number of units that they were allowed to go up to? Didn't we put that in our last discussion?
No, in the last discussion, um, or, we've had a lot of discussions, but we, we've talked about them getting to a point where they could then start to get COs and post bonds for the outstanding work. And, and again, the bonds have been posted, but it's September and it's gonna be October soon, and then it's gonna be November, and then we're gonna be looking at the spring, and I just frankly, that, that can't happen. So, um, they are selling, I think we've done about seven certificates of occupancy, and that was, I believe, since like July. So there is some momentum, winter's coming, that will slow down, but we really need to send the message that they've gotta button this up before the season ends.
So have they sold seven right now? Have they sold seven?
They have, Mr. Chairman, yep.
So it's the move forward. Yeah, but you're right, you gotta button them up, so the Chair will take a motion.
What do you want us to move, Melissa?
Um, I think a, a motion to support the staff comments and cap the units at fifteen certificates could be appropriate, if that's okay?
Yes, so moved.
Okay, motion made to endorse the department's recommendation to cap the, this is our occupancy of fifteen?
Second.
Okay, second, any discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
The applicant's, I see the applicant for twenty Treptier Drive.
Good evening, members of the planning board. Just to give a brief overview of the project, for twenty Treptier Drive, the applicant, John Patterson, she is requesting a special permit to convert a single-family house into a two-family dwelling, and this is our third meeting regarding this project. The last meeting, everything, we updated the plans to meet all the criterias that you guys wanted us to, and she just had some work that needed to be done in the parking, in the parking lot area, that she was gonna be repaving. So, it was beyond the license of our plot surveyor as far as like having to update it to meet the new, new guidelines, so you suggested that we hire a civil, civil engineer to rework the driveway to fix the safety concerns, so we actually have our civil engineer here who can answer any questions that you guys might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you, you can do me one favor, as you speak, and you can, no, the civil engineer, round the mic.
Yes.
My name's Bob Kroll, Kroll Engineering, and this is the latest version of the plan. I'd like to, in addition to the, the plan work, we also did a, a small drainage analysis.
Thank you very much.
I only have four copies if I can.
Give her one.
It looks like you might have pretty much what I have.
Alright. Yeah, we're pretty much at the same.
Okay, okay. So, the, uh, the existing road came up to here, the existing driveway, and we have a, a curve, we've curved it in here, it's a thirteen and a half foot radius coming in, and there's four parking spots in the back, one, two, three, four, and we regraded this in the back, there's an existing pool that's gonna be removed or filled in, and we regraded this, we put some steps in here. On this particular plan here, we have the top of the wall, the concrete wall, there's a little concrete wall right on this side, and so, in the back here, we, we have a little detention basin, and it's, uh, it's not, it's not very deep, it's only a, a couple feet, and we have a small three-inch pipe that runs out there, so we don't want any standing water there with a triple E and all, so we, we added that, and the calculations I just sent to Connor, and there's no additional runoff to the, to the site or to the road.
Yes. Mr. Murphy, if you could, come in there.
Clemmons? Um, this is my first time seeing this plan, so I had written a staff report in relation to the plan that was with your packets.
Yeah.
I had asked for several revisions to be made to it, and it seems as if Mr. Kroll and the applicant have addressed most of those concerns. We would like to do a deeper in-depth review of it, but in terms of what the board is asking and what they are providing, they're starting to meet it, yes.
So at, at this point, based on the department being able to review it, continue this matter to digest what you provided them, alright? Before I do that, would I go away, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I think Friday we finished the, the drainage calc, and I, I've been a little busy, so I, I just got the, the drainage area plans, so...
Oh, that's, that's fine.
Everything's, he, he should have everything now.
Yeah, it, it happens, that's for sure.
Yeah, so.
Would the board have any questions or comments right now?
Yeah, no right now.
No.
No questions or comments?
No, I, I would just, I'm happy that the applicant is working with you, Mr. Kroll, something we had advocated, and I think, hopefully, you'll see how much easier it is, you know, to have a professional engineer, which is why we encourage people, so I appreciate the effort, and I know it costs money, but I think it's, you know, we, it's the best thing to do, so thank, thank you for that.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, no comments.
Okay, have, this is a public hearing, so anybody wishes to come up, speak, and ask that you identify yourself? Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna do this one. The Chair will get a motion to continue this matter until October eighth, is that your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, sir. Back October eighth, please, during the course from now to late, late touch with the department to make sure we get it, if you want.
You can have, we'll have the conditions ready.
This one is the, so is the billboard ready? Is twenty-three, six, two, two, four, five, four, four, Wood Road ready?
Yeah, Christine is, is on that.
You wanna take up the billboard?
Yeah. Okay, two thirty-six, two forty, Wood Road, file seventeen dash twelve, billboard special permit, apply re-logging communications applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So I have an update from both the landlord and the client with regard to the two issues that were outstanding. The two issues remain outstanding. There has been no agreement reached with the mayor's office. I know there has been back and forth, I have not been involved in those discussions, and I understand that there was back and forth literally right up to sometime late this morning or early afternoon, but no deal has been, you know, essentially agreed to, even in, in principle at this point, and I believe the status is that the mayor is contemplating a counterproposal that was offered by, by our client, together with the landlord. And then on the issue with regard to the fire department's failure to approve, we're in, we're in the same ultimate position. There has been further discussion, the landlord has authorized changes, we're not in a position to, to do it, we don't control the hydrogen station, but the landlord has offered changes to address a suggestion that was made by the deputy fire chief, but that cannot address the total concern about, uh, basically the, the, the level of protection that can be provided, because they were suggesting a wall similar to what's on the back wall, and that, there has to be a gate somewhere and the structure to allow equipment, excuse me, in and out, so that's, that's the status update I have.
I wanna say, you have been here a number of times and you've done everything you could, and this is no reflection on you at all, please understand that, but the board has to move forward, we, we have to. One of the hurdles exists is the fire department, that's a hurdle, I, I think I made it clear, I have a hard time getting over what the fire department feels, so at this point, what I'm gonna do is first open up the public hearing, once we come forward, make any comments, questions? Okay, seeing none, let me check it over the board, if any questions or comments?
No questions. No questions.
I don't have anything further, thank you.
Okay, at this point, I'm gonna ask the, the board to make a motion to, to put it to the record, all correspondents, we got to this matter?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, the Chair will get motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So at this point, the Chair will entertain a, a motion? Can or can't?
Can.
You can?
I can, yes.
Based on the discussion this evening and the issues that still remain outstanding, I make a motion to deny the special permit to thirty-six to two forty Wood Road.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Again, this is no reflection on you, I know you've tried your best, but it's something we have to move forward.
Understood, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board.
The staff's been working great, but we have to move forward, so.
Understood, thank you, sir.
So we, we want to include reference to the findings through today's date, nine, ten, nineteen?
We have all the correspondence.
Yeah, yeah.
We just gotta move forward. It's been going on too long. Alright, the next matter we're gonna take up is the Clean Harbors, are they here?
You want to take up the preliminary first?
Oh, sure.
Which one?
The preliminary subdivision, Clean Harbors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got it.
Sure. I'm proud.
Question.
Staff needed more time to review. I prepared tonight a staff report, along with town engineers giving you a report and your materials on his recommendations as to the plan, as well as the waivers. So, they have a number of waivers that, in addition to whatever action you want to take on the plan, it would be helpful to them to have the board vote on those waivers, to give them direction on the preparation of the definitive plan.
Thank you for creating and consulting. Paul Seaver, Clean Harbors, Christine and Ben Littman from Clean Harbors.
Quick question. Procedurally, are we doing the preliminary subdivision first? We'll finish that, and then we'll move into the site plan? Okay. Just very briefly, for refresher, what we're proposing here is to extend the Columbia Terrace right-of-way, or extension, onto the Clean Harbors property with a short cul-de-sac. It was submitted back in the late eighties, never constructed, so we would like to abandon that previous plan that's on record at the land court and proceed with this layout as depicted. We have reviewed the comments, both from the town engineer and from Christine. And we've actually met with the fire department as well, and we've also started making some changes for the stormwater comments as well. Basically, we don't have any problem with any of the recommendations of the town engineer or Christine, so we would be open to all of their recommendations as conditions of approval. I did have one thing that I just wanted to discuss with the board. The existing width of Columbia Terrace, the actual pavement's twenty-four feet in width. The town engineer's recommending twenty-eight feet in width. I just want to point that out. Basically, whichever one the planning board is happy with will be willing to live with. Either one should be fine. Our width of pavement around the cul-de-sac, as submitted, was twenty-six feet anyways, so we're going from twenty-six to twenty-eight feet around the cul-de-sac, not a big change. And it's a relatively short distance for the straight section here, going from twenty-four feet to twenty-eight feet, if the board desires. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No questions.
I'm done. Christine, can I partake in this, since I wasn't here?
Yep.
Okay. I have no questions, then. Okay, I'm sorry. No questions.
Yeah.
So, Christine, if I just heard correctly, all the items which you had questions about, for example, like granite curbing versus Cape Cod berm, the applicant is basically saying that they're, if I'm wrong, sir, correct me, is that they are in agreement with all of your recommendations. So, does that leave anything unresolved in your mind?
I think where it's a preliminary plan, we're giving more guidance for the definitive submission. I anticipate that submission to be in shortly before the board, and then we'll be getting into the real details of the subdivision. But what we try to do is, on the staff level, is point out things now that we want them to make sure they take a look at and address. And some of the departments have done the same thing. But, you know, they're going to have to ask for the waivers as part of the definitive process as well. But I think if tonight, the board could give them some direction on what items they either agree with or disagree with, it will help in the preparation of the plans.
Okay.
I can clarify on the curbing specifically. Granite curbing is proposed for the subdivision roadway, which is why we had not requested a waiver for the granite curbing for the subdivision roadway. The reason Cape Cod berm was shown on the plan is because we are proposing some Cape Cod berm on the driveway entrances where it comes into the subdivision roadway.
Okay. Well, I won't speak for the chairman, but that's one thing he has consistently applied. And whenever you look at projects throughout town, it's not even close in terms of the quality. So, I just throw that out, and, you know, to the extent that we err on the side of quality and doing it correctly, then that's the best thing. I have one other question. To what extent is snow removal on that road done by the town versus done by Clean Harbors?
It's proposed to be done entirely by Clean Harbors. We would like the road to remain private, to be maintained by Clean Harbors.
Okay. And you have snow remove, you have places to put the snow, I assume?
Yes, we do.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I don't have any comment or question, but I guess in response to you looking for a recommendation from the board with regards to reducing the pavement width from twenty-eight, maybe to twenty-four, you said twenty-four was the existing pavement width today on the road that you're tying into?
That's correct.
Is there any curbing on that road?
Yes, there is.
So, it's a curb, it's a curb-to-curb width of twenty-four?
Correct.
I mean, I would be in support of reducing it to twenty-four unless there was a major reason why engineering that they had that, just because I think it'd be an awkward transition otherwise. Do we have to give any input on the specific waivers requested, or more just a general in agreement with the staff?
Well, they have made the, you know, a formal request for the waivers as part of the preliminary. And I think for those ones that you feel that you could make that, I think it would be helpful. As I said, we go through the definitive process again. You're going to have to revote them, because that's a different, on the requirements. I just wanted to just point out in the materials, for those members that may not be familiar with it, what we gave you as an attachment was an aerial view. If you recall, the board had worked with Quark and had done quite a bit of work in this area, including the discontinuance of Lancaster that was shown. And the second handout that is highlighted is that discontinuance plan. If you see the dark shaded where it just says road, that's the end of Lancaster. And to answer the question about Columbia and the town, the town has accepted Columbia Terrace to the point where the yellow, the white coming up to the yellow. So, and that is where the, you can't see it, but a little bit off of this plan that says Peters here.
Yeah.
That's where the granite curbing basically starts, and it's a twenty-four foot width.
Yeah.
So, as part of, I think in the staff report, part of that discussion, we had a turnaround, if you recall. I think it was Mr. Diotti, Melissa, that requested the turnaround as part of the Quark development. Mr. Digatana. Oh, no, okay. So, that has been constructed on the ground, and in that aerial, you can somewhat see it. And we would want to work with them on the, at the point of the definitive process to keep that the way it is. So, but we can work through that at a staff level.
I just got a question. You said you're going from granite to Cape Cod berm at a certain point?
Yes.
What is that?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, while he's getting this ready, the cul-de-sac is what we're approving. The driveway is part of the site and review, and it does relate, because it comes into the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
So, the entire subdivision roadway would be granite curbing?
We would like to do Cape Cod berm on this driveway that interconnects to the lower portion of the site, so.
My concern with Cape Cod berm is this, is when the winter comes in, the power starts going, you start chipping away at it. Be it all in granite. Would there be any consideration making that granite also?
Would prefer to keep that Cape Cod berm? In our experience, the big difference with the Cape Cod berm that you see chipped versus stuff that gets maintained is whether it's done monolithically or whether it's glued on top. We do not like the glued-on-top stuff. We agree that just crumbles.
Yeah.
However, we've found that if it's done monolithically in the same pore as the actual roadway, it holds up very well in this type of situation. So, ultimately, I know it's up to the board. Our preference would be to keep that portion monolithic, Cape Cod.
As a member of Congress, I've said, one of my biggest things is curbing should always, my opinion should always be granite, so it doesn't show wear and tear over the years. But that's something we discussed later a bit, just to be heads up. I've always asked for granite curbing and everything.
Okay. The site plan driveways as well?
Yeah, I think it's important, because down the road, again, the wear and tear. But it's something we'll take up for the definitive.
Okay.
All right, thanks. So, at this point, we're going to go up to the board to accept the preliminary with the waivers.
So, do you want to, do you want to go through those waivers?
Yes.
I think you should, because there should be an understanding.
Can you, are you about to run?
Yeah, sure. So, I attached to the staff report on page three. With the exception of one area that town engineer went into more detail, I think if you, pretty much, we can go down each one there. Do you want me to read them off, or do you want?
If you want to, or?
Whatever.
Let me ask you this. What is the department's recommendation as we go down the list of waivers? What is the department's recommendation?
As to the list?
As to, yes. As to what you're saying.
We kind of did each waiver individually. You, it's there. The only thing that we did not, was we weren't in total agreement with town engineer, was the issue of the sidewalks. I think we can discuss that. He's talking about an easement later on, town engineer.
Yeah, let's, that one, we couldn't deal with right now. Waiver.
You prefer not to?
I prefer not to.
Okay. So, they all have to present a plan to you that shows sidewalks on both sides? Okay.
You comfortable with that?
Yeah.
All right, then, the board feels when we got to the waivers?
Don't move the mic, folks.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, we got to waivers. What, have any comments, questions on the waivers that we've listed? Okay, seeing none, what, the chairman's in motion, we got to the waivers, get the grant such waivers, except for the sidewalk.
Is the board direct, so our recommendation with the pavement was twenty-eight with the town, so.
Yeah, what happens to that road, then? Does it, will it expand? Because right now.
Well, I think, so the type-one roadway has a twenty-eight-foot pavement with the sidewalks, with the grass strip.
Yeah.
It's somewhat modified. I think you showed a detail of twelve and twelve and thirteen.
All right.
So, he does, the thirteen didn't have the sidewalks, if I remember correctly.
So, we had proposed a fifty-foot right-of-way, twelve-foot lanes, thirteen feet.
Can you just say that again? That just went off.
Sure. We had proposed a twenty-four-foot pavement width, which was two twelve-foot lanes, granite curbing, and then thirteen-foot grass strips on either edge of the roadway.
So, what I'm trying to point out to the board is the typical, in our subdivision rules, shows the two sidewalks and the twenty-eight feet. They do correlate in that it would be helpful to him to know what the pavement width is and whether or not you want the sidewalks, to be able to show that detail.
What's the harm about having a sidewalk there? Like, what's?
There's, let me just say, there's no sidewalks on Columbia Terrace. You know, we just, it's something in the town that we have many roads that don't have sidewalks, and if there's an opportunity to have at least one put on one side of it, I think what he, if you could maybe show them that where, it's not going to be the whole length of Columbia, it's just the one side of the bulb of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, it really ends up being a short sidewalk to nowhere. Where, somebody travels down the existing Columbia Terrace to where Quark has their paved turnaround, there's no sidewalk in that entire approach. Our cul-de-sac that we're proposing here, it's about a hundred feet till we reach the actual circle, so it would literally be about a hundred and fifty feet of sidewalk, just at the end of this cul-de-sac turnaround only.
So, they do own property on either side. There's two small slivers, which we call, that is non-conforming lots, which is the registered and unregistered side there. But they'll be part of the lot, that if we get to that point and that you decided you wanted them, they could.
Which side, if you're going to put a sidewalk on that, which side would you put it on?
I would put it on this side here, if we were going to put a sidewalk on there, with the thought being that this will be really the primary point, that if somebody were to use it, it'd probably be somebody in this building here.
Yeah. Any questions? Any questions?
No questions.
Any questions?
So, can, I'm not sure that I'm clear. Are you suggesting just the twenty-four without the sidewalks?
I just, I just think a sidewalk's important.
That's okay. I just want to be clear on where we're going and.
I just think at least one side they have a sidewalk, I really do.
Okay. So, the typical they have will work, twenty-four, no sidewalk.
Yeah, and that would be on the inside.
Okay. So, twenty-four feet of pavement, sidewalk on one side.
Yeah, I'd like to have some sidewalk there.
Oh, you do want, okay. That's what I'm trying to.
Okay, understood.
It, just, just in case, you know? I'd rather have it now than have it later.
As far as the alignment on that, we have thirteen feet of grass there. You want to see, say, a five-foot grass strip and then the sidewalk?
Yeah, five foot.
If it's going to be under your maintenance, Clean Harbors, I mean, they'll take care of it better than we do, so I think the grass will just.
I can envision flowers and all that stuff. All right, I think that's good. Yeah, I think a sidewalk on one side would be kind of important.
Okay.
All right, so, based on that, chairman's in motion to approve of preliminary, on those with the recommendations.
So moved.
Give you a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Marissa. And I will move on to, the next one would be a site plan review.
So, I, I'm sorry, maybe I'm missing. Did you just vote to approve all the waivers, twenty-four feet of pavement with a sidewalk on one side?
Yes.
Did you take a separate motion on approving the preliminary plan?
No, we approved it with the conditions.
Oh, you did it all in one motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't hear that, so.
Now, we have the site plan, which is nineteen oh nine.
Technically, we have two site plans.
You do, yeah.
Are we opening them both, one at a time?
You know what? I'd rather do them both, because we're talking about the same block.
You do need to read both.
Yeah, but I'd rather open them both, if you don't mind.
Yeah. I think it makes more sense.
It just moves things along.
So, if you're going to combine, you need to read both addresses?
Yeah.
The tabs and.
Thank you, thank you very much. Let me read the, this is the first one. Notice given by planning board under provisions of national law, chapter forty-eight, section eleven, Braintree zoning order, chapter one thirty-five, articles five, seven, eight, eleven, twelve, and fourteen, that a public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, September tenth, two thousand and nineteen, at seven fifteen P.M. at the Braintree Town Hall. The planning board will consider site plan review and grading permit application from the applicant, Clean Harbors of Braintree, Inc. The proposal is for the construction of a new two-and-a-half-story office building, nine thousand six hundred and ten square feet, with an adjacent parking lot for parking forty-six vehicles. In addition, grade on the site with an estimated movement and removal of ten thousand plus or minus cubic yards of material and site improvements, but not limited to the parking areas, utilities, drainage, signage, site driveways at the existing facility located at number one Hill Avenue. The project is part of an overall upgrade to the site, including demolition of the existing lab and maintenance building approximately eighteen thousand seven hundred square feet. The property is located in number one Hill Avenue, within the highway business district as identified, assessment plan thirty forty-five, plot one F, and assessment plan thirty forty-seven, plot seventeen eighteen. The property is located at number one Hill Avenue within the Highway Business District as identified Assessors Plan 3045, Plot 1F, and Assessors Plan 3047, Plot 1718. That's the first one we need to deal with. Notice given by the Planning Board under the provision of Master in Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, the Braintree zoning order, Chapter 135, Articles 5, 7, 8, 11, 12, and 14, that a public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, September 10, 2019, at 7:15 p.m. at the Braintree Town Hall. The Planning Board will consider site plan review, grading permit application from the applicants, Clean Harbors of Braintree, Inc. The proposal is for the construction of two-and-a-half-story office building, 9,610 square feet footprint, adjacent parking lot, parking of 46 vehicles. In addition, grade on the site with an estimated movement and/or removal of plus or minus 10,000 cubic yards of material and site improvements, but not limited to the parking areas, utilities, drainage, signage, and site driveways at the existing facility located at number one Hill Avenue. The project is part of an overall upgrade to the site, including demolition of the existing lab, maintenance building approximately 18,700 square feet. The property is located at number one Hill Avenue within the Highway Business District as identified Assessors Plan, Assessors Plan, I'm sorry, 3045, Plot 1F, and Assessors Plan 3047, Plot 1718. Thank you.
So Mr. Chairman, the previous action that you took was the preliminary plan giving direction to the applicant on the concept for the definitive plan. The definitive plan, when it's filed and hopefully approved, it will create the frontage that's needed for these two lots. The applications tonight, because we haven't gone through that process, they're making a presentation just to explain to the board and the public what is going to happen as far as a site plan review on the site. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Grady and Grady Consulting again. See, I'll go and join us. So I'll put them here. This is a proposed building that Clean Harbors would like to construct on the property. They would like to remove several of the older buildings, which have really kind of run down, not the best office space for their personnel to be operating from. Those existing buildings are located closer to the Four River, towards the rear of the property. Current access to the site is over Hill Avenue here. However, proposing to extend the roadway here with the subdivision roadway, as we discussed at the previous hearing. The thought is that the existing truck traffic for the transfer facility will continue to use Hill Avenue. We would like to take the cars and the office personnel and have them access by Columbia Terrace extension to the new space in the front. This is existing use. There's no change in use. They're simply trying to get their staff into a more modern facility and a better working environment. The new building will be a combination of office spaces, laboratory spaces, shower areas for their field personnel to get changed, coming back and forth to the various jobs that they depart to and from. And that's the 9,600-square-foot building that's proposed in this area here on Lot 10. And then after they remove the buildings on Lot 9, they'd like to construct a small maintenance facility for their maintenance crew on site. That's a 2,400-square-foot maintenance facility and small laboratory space within that. With the subdivision, once it's approved, Lot 9 will consist of approximately 409,000 square feet, 409,561 square feet to be precise. The buildings that are going to be removed are highlighted in a red hatch in this area here. The proposed buildings are shown in blue. This is the 2,400-square-foot maintenance building. This is the 9,600-square-foot office and laboratory space. The main level of this building's on the upper floor. The lower level is actually about half of the footprint, just the downhill side, as this is going to be built somewhat into the hill. Lot 10 will be comprised of approximately 69,627 square feet. Sheet 2 also depicts adequate access for the fire department's turning vehicles throughout the project area here. That has been reviewed by the fire department as well. Sheet 3 of the site plan depicts building coverages and open space areas. The, one of the new buildings, the 9,600 square-foot building here on Lot 10, the 2,400-square-foot maintenance facility, and then the buildings that will remain following the construction. Both of the lots comply with dimensional requirements for area, frontage, once the subdivision is approved, and setbacks and coverages. The majority of the site work will take place on Lot 10, since that portion of the site's primarily not developed. The 9,600-square-foot building measures 60 feet by 100 feet. We've proposed a parking area in this area here with handicap spaces near the front entrance and also a second handicap space near the lower entrance along the rear area here. We are proposing a looped access drive around the perimeter of the building. The fire department asked us to consider increasing the width of that driveway slightly. We have agreed to increase that width, so we do anticipate bumping that up to the widths requested by the fire department. Drainage for the project is going to be divided into three areas. There's a large infiltration system proposed in this area here. There is a catch basin in the parking lot, elevation 44.6 here. We'll also be picking up the stormwater runoff from the subdivision roadway extension with infiltration within that chamber system. There's a second system near this lower access road. And this accesses the lower level of the building, so it is approximately eight feet lower in elevation than the main entrance floor. We're proposing a catch basin, storm scepter, and additional infiltration. And then there's a bio-retention basin in the rear, this area here. We'll collect runoff from a catch basin in this area here, discharging it to that bio-retention basin. Each of these systems has an overflow, which will be conveyed to a large crushed stone trench, the full length of the existing pavement in this area here. We've submitted drainage calculations for the two 10, 25, and 100-year storm events, which demonstrate that the proposed development will not increase stormwater runoff for the proposed condition. We do have a stormwater permit ready to file. We anticipate filing that within the next few days. The existing sewerage for the project is located in Hill Avenue. Currently, the entire facility runs off of a sewage ejector pump that ties into a force main. From a sewage disposal, it's not an ideal situation. We have identified a gravity sewer main on Hill Avenue that we're able to connect to by gravity for both the new building and the existing facility. We'll also be extending the town's water main from Columbia Terrace down through the cul-de-sac, where we're proposing a hydrant as part of the subdivision side of things, and then connecting in both fire protection and domestic water service to the 9,600-square-foot building. The maintenance facility will tie into the existing water main. It's a four-inch water main that services the existing buildings in the lower area there that will connect to the new 2,400-square-foot building. And then we'll also do a gravity sewer line from there to connect into Hill Avenue as well. I'm sure this sheet's kind of a repeat of the last sheet here on you. We did include a landscape design for trees, both for the roadway and for the development of the property. Down near the maintenance building, no additional trees are proposed down in that area there. The fire department actually wants us to minimize the amount of vegetation down in that area. They prefer the crushed stone over any sort of landscaping or mulch, which could be flammable. So most of the landscaping's going to be concentrated around the new building. We do have site lighting proposed around the new parking lot as well. Three parking lot lights proposed in these areas here. Sorry about that. The back leg on the easel broke. So lastly, I just wanted to take a quick look at the parking. For the office building, the 9,600-square-foot building, 39 spaces are required. We proposed 46 spaces, including the three handicap spaces. For the maintenance building, three parking spaces are required. We proposed three additional parking spaces adjacent to that maintenance building. So unless anybody else has anything they'd like to add, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
What we do first, if you don't mind, is I open up to the public.
Okay.
If the public has any comments or statements, please go forward. Identify yourself. Okay, see none. We'll open it up to the board. Any question? First, I'm going to be open up to...
I just, there's a, there was a letter that we received from the East Braintree Civic Association, an email. I know Mr. Olivera is here tonight, from Mike Lang, who had some concerns. He expressed, otherwise, the department reports are slowly coming in. So I think that what I'm going to, what I'd like to suggest to the board is there's a lot of moving parts to this whole presentation. I don't know, time-wise, what the applicant's considering for submission of the definitive, but there are some issues that may require other boards to get involved with. So we would probably be looking for some type of continuance, long-term continuance, in order to get the issues resolved with the definitive and moving forward. I can speak to you when you get to that point. Tonight was just to present the project and get a feel.
How long do you think?
I'm going to suggest the first meeting in December.
I think, we're actually just about ready to submit the definitive. I think we can have it together by the end of the week.
The problem is, we're experiencing quite a bit of filings. And October is filling up. We're moving to November. You know, we, it's just difficult for us to, given our existing schedule. And I think that there may be some issues that we'll be talking with the town solicitors about the use of the property and if it requires any zoning board relief. There may be a demolition delay permit required for the older part of the building. It may or may not, depending on the age of it, trigger that. So there's a couple of moving parts that we're going to need some time. Even if we did bring in the definitive this week, I don't think we could get to it till November with the way that October schedule has already filled up. We received over four, I think, three or four public submissions this week. Yeah.
I'm just going to ask you to do the best that you can. That's all that we...
They generally do, but what's happening is been, has been a flood here, so. As far as, I know they're inundated right now. So I think I got to let the department work as quickly as they can, but I want to make sure they have time. So...
I mean, in one sense, we have to resolve the definitive plan anyways to create the lots from which the site plan. So even, you know, I have no problem with the way they submitted it. It's just that we would have to write the decision anyways to say that until you had definitive approval, you couldn't move forward. So we might as well just keep going forward.
Well, I'm going to leave it up to the board.
But I think if there's questions that you folks have now, it would help them to know what those are with this, this part of the development.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Paul Fowler. I'm the attorney of David Smol from the Austin Department of Public Safety.
To be fair, you got to go wrong.
If I heard, if I heard you correctly, you want to continue this to the December meeting? Is that right?
That's my recommendation.
Is it that the, and I understand October's already filled. I guess we would request if, if it's possible for us to appear before you in November. Is that, because what we would envision is, obviously, the site plan is contingent upon and would be conditioned for an approved definitive subdivision plan. So we, so the whole reason why we file these things together is they can work concurrently. And now that we've gotten the planning board's feedback on the preliminary plan, which we appreciate, thank you for that. As Rick said, he'll go back and prepare a definitive plan consistent with the feedback that we've heard from the planning department, from this board, and from other, you know, municipal officials as we review the preliminary plan, and we'll get that in right away. We don't, we, we would expect that the definitive plan would be able to be considered in a single public hearing, since we've vetted the preliminary plan with you. And hopefully, if there's any other questions on the site plan, we could also vet that at the same, on the same night and perhaps be in a position to get a decision by the planning board on both items on the same evening. If that can happen in November, that'd be greatly appreciated. We're about four to six months behind on this project for Clean Harbors. But if it, if the best you can do is December, you know, we got to go by your...
What I don't want to do is throw, throw it under the department and then have them come here because they're so backlog right now.
Right.
Maybe they are short-staffed and stuff.
All right.
And I understand, I understand how, you know, how important this would be to move forward, but I also don't want to burden them right now. So I apologize for that, but for some reason, everything's before the boards all over the, all over the state right now.
Okay. Well, we obviously appreciate the time and effort of all the municipal boards. We know you're, you got a lot on your plate. If, I don't know if we need to, because I think the timeframes are probably okay, but if we have to sign an extension to get you past December, we'll, we're happy to do that.
Let me ask you this. If we condition, if we schedule for November conditionally on the knowledge that we probably won't get hurt and we let you know ahead of time, then we can put it over to the summers. How would that work?
I mean, you could continue these site plan reviews to November with that understanding.
Yeah.
And then, but then you run the risk of anything that's on the October agenda being filled up on the December agenda. We still haven't got the definitive plan filed yet. And I know Rick has told me, and he's ready to go, and I do it, I know you'll have it in in the next couple of days, but it's just, it's the volume of applications coming in at this point that we're trying to get people off the agendas and move them forward, rather than just tie up space.
Yeah. So hearing Christine, if, I think we, it would probably be, work out better because I think we can accomplish this with one public hearing on the definitive and one public, you know, the continued public hearing on the site plan to December. We can knock them both off in December. We'll make that work on our end. We could get everything to Christine well in advance and work through and vet out any issues. I, that's all. Besides introducing myself, I have nothing more to add other than to say, both Christine and I have been around with this property since the 1980s. I was talking to Christine on the phone today.
Grand school?
Exactly. I was talking to Christine on the phone today, and I jokingly said, "Well, I hope she aged better than I did." And it was not a joke. You really did, Christine. You looked terrific.
I was very young.
So what do you want, in October now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Right now, let's vote on it. They haven't filed, let's go.
It's obviously...
Don't even bother filing.
It's obviously the good, the good life in Braintree because...
Yeah.
So, it's, it's, it's nice to see everyone after 30 some odd years, but we're still back and we're still here. So, I thank the board for their time and, and we'll see you in December. Unless there are questions that you want us to answer tonight on the, on the site plan, it's pretty straightforward.
It is pretty straightforward.
The other thing, let me introduce Ben Lickman, who's an attorney in-house for Green Harbors. We have a memo that we could give the planning board and the director just to explain how each of the site plan criteria that is set out in the zoning bylaw, there are eight criteria. We itemize each criteria and we explain why we believe the plan is in compliance. It'll help you.
Thank you.
If you, if you, if we receive a favorable decision, it's half-written or more than half-written, but you, you get to see that we paid attention to your criteria and, and purposefully tried to design the plan to, to meet each of the, each of it. So, you'll have an opportunity to read it or the plan department.
He wrote this memo.
Yes, he did.
But you're going to take credit for it.
No, no, I...
You have to, you have to. He's a young lawyer.
He even signed it, he even signed it. So, you know, what we find is that it facilitates the review process and makes it easier for the planning department if they could, if they could sort of see, you know, how we attended to and complied with the criteria. So, that's why we wanted to give that to you. Thank you very much.
So, we'll wait for the definitive to come in, schedule it if it meets within the time limits that we need, but for tonight, my recommendation would be to continue it to the meeting in December, which I believe is, Connor, is it the December 10th? So, we do, usually do a letter of mutual extension. We would ask the applicants to sign that, and that would be for both applications, '09 and '10.
Okay. Chair, would you like to motion continue this matter? To December meeting?
So moved.
Give me a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the next matter we're going to pick up here is the Brigham and Women's.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to update the board on Brigham and Women's. I prepared the draft conditions and have spoken to them and their council, and they have requested a continuing, more time to review those and to potentially have some additional discussions with the town regarding the mitigation package. So, they have asked to be placed on the October, Mr. Chairman. We have a letter from Ron Ruth, from Sharon and Loggins.
Chair, would you like to motion continue this? So, we're talking...
So moved.
Give me a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to jump to a couple of different things. Request for approval of the meeting limits of July 9, 2019, August 20th, and August 11th, executive session. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Give me a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Chair, would you like to motion for the September zoning board appeals petition is, would be against to the department's recommendation to approve?
No recommendations from the staff at this time, Mr. Chairman.
So, Chair, would you like to approve any recommendations? Next, what's on the agenda?
I'm...
144 Allen Street. Go ahead. What were you going to say?
I also wanted, before you, I know how quickly you like to get out of here, not to forget about the comprehensive zoning ordinance.
Well, we've already said that that's going to be put over to the neighborhood, to the, we keep putting that over anyways, so the...
But we need to, tonight, have a motion to a date certain.
Okay.
Is what, so we can...
Okay, so Chair, would you like to motion to continue the zoning ordinance to a specific date certain?
So, the council has continued to October 1st, and the residents' working group is working diligently through some items. Do you want it?
I had, we, we had committed to not to have discussion till after the, the, the working group came back with something, so we'll just keep continuing it.
Okay, so what, which meeting would you prefer, the October or November?
Probably November.
So, we need a motion to continue it to...
Chair, would you like to motion continue?
Is it November 4th, Connor?
November 12th.
12.
So moved.
Give me a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next matter would be the 144 Allen Street. Special permission review.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Brian Palmucci, I'm here on behalf of 144 MPB Trust and its sole beneficiary, who's also here, Mr. Mark Bogan. With me also is Sean Hardy, the project engineer, along with Chief Man. As you may recall, Mr. Bogan seeks to construct a two-story structure at 144 Allen Street. It is a building that's approximately 82 by 48 feet. It would be containing six contractor-type bay units that would be used for commercial purposes. This project has received favorable approval from the zoning board and the conservation commission, and we're here tonight, I believe this is our third hearing, but we're here tonight seeking both a special permit and a favorable site plan review from this board. If I, if I, I was going to walk through the site plan review and special permit, if that's okay to board?
Yes.
Feel free to cut me off if there are any questions. So, relative to site plan review, the site plan review is triggered in this instance because the construction seeks to build a structure that's greater than 500 square feet. And I submit to the board that the design and the construction of the proposed project would not create a detrimental impact to the neighborhood or to the environment. As it relates to the neighborhood, the current neighborhood, as the board is well aware, consists of residential, commercial, and industrial uses currently. The site has been used for commercial purposes, and based on the board's inquiries in the last hearing when we were here, I believe it was two months ago, the design of the commercial building, we've redesigned the exterior of the commercial building to give it a softer, more residential feel. We've included a cupola at the top, some residential-grade shingles, as well as residential siding material using Hardy board. The low profile along, the site drops about 30 feet from Allen Street to the back, so the profile on Allen Street is of a, of a single-story building. We think that that, along with the residential, more of a residential facade, will relate well to both the commercial and the residential uses that exist in the area. There'll also be minimal traffic to this site, or to and from the site, on a regular basis, as it's not really designed for retail purposes, but more for contractor-type spaces. You would, we anticipate that you would see an electrician, handyman, carpenter, small type outfit with one truck, maybe a, a staff person who handles phone calls or, or billing, working out of the office in the space. We trust that the capacity of the local streets can, can accommodate that minimal traffic that this particular project would, would generate. The infrastructure in the site is suitable to sustain this property, the proposal for this property, and the entryway on Allen Street would remain substantially similar to what exists today. The Allen Street side of the property will, will access three units, while the other three units will be accessed over an easement access, an access easement from Shaw Street through a commonly-owned commercial site. The two distinct access points, we think, will also help with traffic flow to and from the site, as it's not all coming into the same entryway. The, the site will have ample parking, both within the building, through the, through the bays, as well as on the paved surface that would be in the rear. As we've previously mentioned, we anticipate that the, the six units will be used by small, self-employed folks and, and small operations with no heavy equipment. As it relates to the impact on the environment, the environment around the property consists of the riverfront area, which is approximately 10 feet at its widest point from the, from the, you can see on the graded side, on the shaded side, from where the, the property really, the usefulness of, the use part of the property begins. And that's a, it's like a 10-foot, 15-foot railroad berm. So, the, the property really sits like a bowl. From the top with, of Allen Street, it slopes down about 30 feet, then it levels out, and then the railroad berm goes up another 15 feet in the rear. The property was approved, or the project was approved by the conservation commission with order of conditions in August of 2018. The conditions require a river, riverfront restoration of approximately 600 square feet of area adjacent to the water quality basin and the existing railroad berm, which would be on the rear of the property. An additional condition from the CONCOM was that all snow storage would be required to be kept on the, in the rear of the paved area of the property. Now, that rear of the property will be used for parking and to provide adequate access and circulation for vehicles on the backside of the site. The existing conditions will be improved through the paving of the area, as it's been, for quite some time, it's been gravel, somewhat paved and, and mostly gravel. Currently, the gravel goes all the way up to the railroad berm, and by paving that area in the back of the site, it'll be better, easier to maintain and keep cleaner and cause less debris to run off the site into the, the river area. The project, from the very beginning, sought to disturb as least amount of area near the, the river, the riverfront area. And as I said, there's a, between the property and the, the river is a, is a railroad tracks and a 10, a 10 to 15-foot railroad berm, so it is, it is pretty much set back. However, we didn't want to disturb any of that area. The lot, strike that. The, when we were before the conservation commission in August of 2018, the, after several hearings, it was agreed upon that the paving, that the paving in the back would be a solution to maintenance issues relative to the great, to the gravel going into the river area, as well as the riverfront restoration. And that was approved by CONCOM as part of the order of conditions. The plan as presented to this board provides for approximately 28% open space, which exceeds the 25% required, and it really represents as much open space as can be provided, given the constraints on the site, specifically due to the topography with the, the elevation of 30 feet on the Allen Street side and then the, the railroad berm of 10 to 15 street in the back. Between, between those two, it really makes it difficult to do much more by way of open space while still accounting for appropriate traffic and access to the three rear contractor bays. As it relates to the special permit that we're seeking before this board, the special permit is required because we are seeking an exception to the 100-foot buffer zone between the proposed commercial building and the adjacent residential property. And as members may recall, on our last hearing date, I submitted a letter from the residential neighbor to that property, he's the only residential abbotter, and he was in support of the property after working with Mr. Bogan. They figured out what would be best in terms of buffering the two, the two sites from each other. The lot is only 127 feet wide, so it really creates a hardship to comply with the 100-foot buffer requirement from the residential. We've proposed to create a 20-foot landscaped buffer between the two properties with wildflowers and giant arborvitae's. Additionally, Mr. Mahmood, who owns the residential, owns and lives in the residential property, in addition to him submitting the letter of, of support for the project, as I said, Mr. Bogan and he have worked together to figure out what would be the most appropriate screening to provide the, the necessary mitigation of any negative implications to his property. The, we asked that, that the board accept what we have proposed here and that the board find that this proposal does not negatively impact the surrounding area, as no additional noise, lighting, or other nuisance will be created at the site that would impact that residential property. Further, important to note that the building that we're seeking to construct, again, due to the topography of the site, would be 30 feet off of Allen Street, it'd be set back 30 feet. That will be probably the, the most important or significant item that we can, or piece of the project that we can put in place to mitigate any negative impact to Mr. Mahmood, because his property, his structure is, is sited only about two or three feet off of Allen Street. So, there'll be a significant, not only will there be this natural buffer that we'll create with landscaping, but there's a significant buffer in just distance. So, while we not, we don't have the side distance for the buffer, there will be a distance in space between the, the two structures. We respectfully request that this board modify the requirement of the buffer transition area between these properties, as we feel this proposal will create adequate screening and buffering to minimize any negative impacts on the residential property next door. We did our best, since the last time we were here, to specifically address the various questions and comments that board members raised. I, I submitted a memorandum, and Mr. Mann had submitted some additional site plans and some additional drainage reports to answer some of the questions and address some of the issues that the board had raised, and I'd certainly be willing to take any questions or any feedback that the board may have at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Attorney Palmucci did submit some revised materials in accordance with the submission deadlines. Those materials were significantly insufficient in the staff's opinion and gave the applicant another opportunity to submit some materials. The plan that you have in front of you dated September 4th, and the two short memos is what was provided in response to the board's comments in the staff report at the last meeting. The staff has not prepared an additional staff report. The, the staff is here this evening and has, has shared with Council Palmucci before the hearing that I'm in a very difficult position and that I do not feel as though the plan as presented is in keeping with the 702 buffer requirements. And the information provided and the lack of landscaping in that particular area is putting the staff in a difficult position to put together the findings that would support this type of application. At the last hearing and included in the staff report, we discussed the applicant removing the pavement that isn't necessary for circulation and parking on the site. That has not been done. The, the pavement outline that is shown on this plan is identical to what was presented at the last meeting. Understanding circulation and not wanting to impede, impede the ability to access the bays, the size of the trucks that they say that are going to be accessing these bays, and the size of the bays respectfully do not need 65 feet to turn into these particular units. Again, pointing out, and this board is very familiar with the requirements of the buffer zone, and instituting a commercial use at this location, which was previously used as commercial, excuse me, as residential, is going to require some substantial upgrades and buffering and removal of pavement in order to, to comply with those requirements and the ordinance. This parking is shown and is presented in testimony this evening, excuse me, this pavement is shown and is presented by council this evening, testimony for the record saying that it's going to be used for parking and circulation. This site requires eight parking spaces, they don't have any parking spaces striped in that area, and I would respectfully request that turning radius plans be presented, because frankly, again, at the shortest distance, we're looking at 65 feet. You know, I don't, I don't see a truck of that size needing to turn and, and pull into the bay, because frankly, the bay, the bays just aren't that big. So, if we're talking about smaller contractors and smaller trucks, that type of circulation is, is not, is not needed, frankly, in my opinion. Further, no additional use of this area has been requested or has been submitted, and similar to other contractor yard buildings that we have worked on, there will be significant conditions regarding the exit... Further, no additional use of this area has been requested or has been submitted, and similar to other contractor yard buildings that we have worked on, there will be significant conditions regarding the exterior of the site within the buffer and what can be done there. And circulation and parking is pretty much, is pretty much it. This site cannot and will not turn into an exterior storage yard, that has not been requested, that is not part of the application, and nor are those types of activities really promoted within the buffer area. So, I would respectfully request that the applicant put their best foot forward and refine this plan and really meet us halfway. Frankly, I am in a very difficult position and not able to put together something that would result in a favorable action. And I would, I would request that the board, if they agree that they support this recommendation, and we try to get something that's palatable and respectful considering the abutting zoning district in this particular area. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Palmuji had comments?
I have no, no comments to that.
Mr. Baker?
I mean, I guess I would just add that this is our best foot forward. I mean, we've, we took very seriously the concerns and the comments that the board had on the last date. As it relates to the pavement, this is the river's front restoration area, the setback from the, from the river area is what was approved by the Conservation Commission. We've had this discussion. We believe that that area is required for parking, and any vehicle that has a trailer on the back, or, you know, a piece of equipment, would need ample room to turn around. We're not seeking to disturb any area that hasn't already been disturbed, back to at least 1971, I believe. That's been a gravel area where vehicles were stored. So, it's not as if we're seeking to dig up grass area and pave it. We had originally proposed with the Conservation Commission to keep it untouched the way it was, as a gravel-topped surface. Conservation Commission, Conservation Commission ultimately approved the condition of having it paved, because it would be easier to maintain and keep clean. We did have a, there was lengthy hearings and back and forth, a number of hearings with the Conservation Commission, and Mr. Bogan was adamant that any additional buffer that's added to the, to the rear of the site only encroaches upon the usable land. So, there's a 10-foot berm. What we're talking about here is a buffer. There's a 10 to 15-foot tall berm on the rear of the site. That in and of itself creates a significant buffer. In addition to that, there'll be a restoration area of three feet, an additional three feet off of the 15-foot berm. Again, this isn't a flat area where you're looking into a residential backyard that would require some, some significant buffer. This is, there's the river, there's the railroad tracks, and separated from the, from the property is a 15-foot wall. If you were to look at the site, it's a 15-foot pile of dirt with shrubs growing on it. So, we would be restoring that area to, as the conditions of the CONCOM require, that riverfront area, and then adding a buffer in addition of plantings. What we're seeking the special permit exception on is as it relates to the neighbor on the residential side, not, I wouldn't, I'd suggest to the board that the rear of the site is buffered. We're talking about Mr. Mahmood's property to the, I believe that's the west. That, there is, there is a requirement for a buffer due to the topography of the site. We have difficulty meeting that requirement. We're asking for a special exception to that in this special permit. We've worked with Mr. Mahmood to both design the building, to have a setback of where the structure's going to build, be built, and to have appropriate screening. Mr. Mahmood is satisfied with that. We're satisfied with that. The two parties agree that that will create a sufficient buffer, which is what we're seeking the exception to, the residential side of the property. So, obviously, it's the board's decision, ultimately, not Mr. Mahmood's decision, but I would, I would respectfully request that the board weigh heavily his opinion as to whether or not this sufficiently screens his property and is warrants an exception to the, to the buffer. I should have stuck with, I have no comment, right? Sorry.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question of the applicant? Does the applicant have Mr. Mahmood's property under purchase and sales?
Not that I'm aware of.
Can you ask your client?
I can. Would you like me to do that now? I don't know that he wants to discuss it, but I can certainly, sure.
We've discussed it.
They have nothing in writing, but there's a discussion, they've had conversations about Mr. Bogan purchasing the land.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody in the public?
No, there's nobody in the public.
Mr. Baker, any questions, comments?
I think from the last iteration, I think it's a good leap forward, in my opinion, exterior-wise, adding the covered roofs over the openings in the front, exterior elements, the cupola, I think it ties in, you know, nicely with the neighborhood, so I think it was a good, you know, push forward from the last iteration.
Thank you.
I'm not as concerned as the pavement, I'm kind of going with the Conservation Committee's idea on that, that if they prefer it paved over gravel, that's, you know, that's kind of their board's take, so I'm more leaning on that, right. I could see Melissa's point of maybe adding a little more, you know, plantings in the rear, if something, some sort of berm or something, but I understand your point of, you know, there already is a 10 to 15-foot buffer, so to speak, already in the rear. So, you know, I think exterior-wise, it was a good take of, you know, use of site and building and, you know, pushing it further off the Allen Street. So, you know, I don't really see much of a issue in my eyes. I like the buffering with the neighbors putting the plantings up, so, and if you're already in talks with them, I think if the neighbors kind of are already in favor, you know, I'm okay with it, so.
Thank you. We took to heart your concerns that you were vastly underwhelmed with our last iteration, and we went back to the drawing board.
Did I hear you say that that, earlier, this is your best foot forward, is that to indicate that this is as far as you can go, as far as the?
We believe so. I mean, I, looking at the site, and I was out there earlier this week, the site's a, it's, like I said, it's a bowl. I mean, the, when you're in the back, it's 30 feet high in the front to Allen Street, and then you turn around and there's a 10 to 15-foot berm to the railroad tracks. I, I guess, I was going to say I can't speak for Mr. Bogan, but I guess that's what I'm getting paid to do, speak for Mr. Bogan. The, the thought of creating, you know, an additional five feet of grass to that berm, one, it's a loss of very valuable land that he's been paying taxes on and that he would like to utilize in a, in a commercial way that's adequate and appropriate for the site, but also it's, in a way, it doesn't make a ton of sense, given the site conditions. We are adding three feet, and we're restoring that area, so you'll have three feet of restoration and then a 15-foot berm. So, we do believe that this is our best foot. We don't, I mean, we, we had lengthy discussions internally among the team as to what we could do to try to make the project more appealing to the board, and this is the best we think we can do. Ultimately, we're, we think it's a very attractive building that tries to fit in with the mix and range of uses in the area. The area, there are some buildings that are really rundown, there's industrial use down there. We think this is a good step forward for the, for the town, in a nice, attractive building that will add to the tax base and with very little negative consequences. It's a six-unit contractor bay, we think those will be local businesses, that'll have a place to expand or grow, and we do. We feel confident that this is a good project. I believe Town Councilor Boz had submitted a letter in support as well that echoed similar interpretation, that this would be a welcome addition to the, to the community, to the neighborhood specifically. So, yeah, I guess the short answer is yes. I believe this is our, our best foot forward, and this is the best we could do, given the site conditions, specifically the topography.
Well, so you heard the staff's concerns. One of the things she mentioned was a turning ratio study?
Mm-hmm.
What are your thoughts on that?
So, I, I think if you, will you pull up the element? So, we're only required to have eight parking spaces. There's six parking spaces in the garages, in the bays. We have, we did a different bit of a drawing here that shows 15 parking spaces along that rare side, which gives ample room to, to turn around. So, if you see the, there's a 20-foot easement, which staff asked for, there's only a 10-foot, I'm going to come over here if I can.
Just use the mic.
Can you grab the mic?
Do we have that planned, Mr. Chairman?
I can give it to you. Do I have to hit anything? Okay. So, this is, this is the site, this is Allen Street, this is the railroad tracks, this is the 10-foot wide right-of-way that we were seeking to utilize, and then after staff comments on the, at the last hearing, one of the conditions they had sought, or one of the changes they had sought, is making that a 20-foot wide access area, which we're fine with doing as a, as a condition. So, if you have that 20 feet, we think that will be close to enough for a turning radius, but if somebody has a trailer on the back of some piece of equipment, they would require additional room to get in and out. And we don't want to create a situation where they would have to drive over parking spaces, and if cars were there, they wouldn't be able to get in to the site. So, if you look, it narrows down here, there's 15 spaces total, so that would be eight through 15 here. And we anticipate that these spots would be for folks if they're working in the, you know, the secretary or the billing folks, or an office administrator who's working in the office portion of it. But also, we anticipate, Mr. Bogan's obviously in the, in the industry and, you know, has run a commercial operation, smaller at one point, rather large now, that the work trucks will be parked in there. But the folks who are driving the work trucks are going to need to park their private vehicles somewhere. So, we anticipate that more than the eight spaces would be needed, because if you have one, just one person working in the offices, that would be six parking spaces taken up, which would only leave two for arguably six contractors. So, that's why we have the additional parking back here, and we think that it's a good use of the site. Again, we're not seeking to encroach any further than this property already has been historically onto the riverfront area. That's, it's less than what currently exists. It's set back further than what currently exists, and that was what we had discussed with the Conservation Commission, and that's what they put in this riverfront restoration area of approximately 600 square feet. So, as it relates to the, to not needing that turn radius, we believe you do need that turn radius, and we believe it, it makes for a safer site to have a little bit more room than having less room, and we think it makes more sense for the users to have a little bit more parking, if necessary, than not enough parking. I've never seen a property that says, "We have too much parking," you know, that's a problem. I understand the concern that staff has about the amount of paving in the area. It's, as I said, we didn't want, our first inclination was to leave it as gravel and undisturbed from, with this project, from what it is today, how it currently exists, and it's existed for, for 40 years. But due to maintenance issues and the conservation's concern about debris and the gravel going into the riverfront, it's going to be paved. And we think we, we will make good and adequate use, and it'll increase the safety of the three bays in the back and the maneuverability around those bays to have that, that area there. So, that would be my response.
So, the answer is, you think that it's not needed?
I think we need it.
Oh, turning ratio study?
Oh, we didn't do a turning ratio study. I think it's based on Mr. Bogan's experience with, you know, using such equipment.
Radius, yeah. Radius, did I say ratio?
Mr. Chairman, and not to interrupt Member Downey, but, and I, I am just, keep reiterating the point, and I, and I understand the, the concern from the Conservation Commission, and the conservation agent sits about three feet away from me every day, all week long. And while pavement is preferred, and I think I said this at the last hearing, over gravel, grasses is, is better than both of those. The item raised this evening about additional parking, respectfully, this site in the buffer isn't a place where we just put additional parking above and beyond the zoning requirements. This type of site introducing additional activity in the buffer, this is, this is not the site where you, that you overbuild, respectfully. This, this particular location and the requirements and the ordinance are not to, to overbuild the site. The comment this evening about the people working in the offices, that's the first that that has ever come up. I was not aware that that was going to be part of the proposal. They don't show that on the plans, they don't reference, reference any parking ratios related to office use, so that's something new this evening as well. And I just, again, I can't, I can't reiterate the point that this particular location is what does the use require, can it be provided as far away as possible from the zone line, and then how do we augment those additional areas? I'm not trying to prohibit them from circulating in and out of the building, but these so-called 15 parking spaces, those have not been submitted on any plans. Those haven't been reviewed by the staff, nor are they part of the proposal. So, the, these are new this evening, and I would just, you know, we have a plan that was submitted, then they resubmitted another plan just last week, and now they're here tonight talking about something completely different, and the use of the buildings for office and all this extra parking, which just, I, I wasn't aware of any of that. I don't know if, if I missed something, but that's all new information.
If I may respond. We've, we've said, as we said to you at the last hearing, that the paved area in the back would be used for parking. We've submitted the plan that shows the paved area in the back, the plan that was approved by Conservation, and the, I have the minutes here from the Conservation, the three hearings at the Conservation Commission, which all referenced that that area is going to be used for parking. That's not new information, I've, I said that to this board on the last date as well. The only thing that's new is we drew the parking spaces in here just for illustrative purposes. We're not asking you to approve this plan, that's right here in front of me, we're asking you to approve the plan that's in front of you. The only purpose that this serves to, to draw those parking spaces is to illustrate the use of the pavement, paved area that we're asking you to approve on the plans that you have in front of you. As it relates to the office use, again, we did discuss that at the last hearing, because we said there would be offices in there in terms of coming and going, that there wouldn't be a lot of traffic, maybe a staff person and administrator. I think that covers it. Obviously, I, I can appreciate that grass would be better than pavement, I can understand how that, that would be something someone would want to see done in that area, but again, we would rely on the fact that this is land that Mr. Bogan owns and does not want to put a grass buffer to his 15-foot railroad berm in the back. He wants to make use of the property in an efficient way that's commercially viable, and that's to have adequate turn radius and adequate parking. Just because we're required to only have eight parking spaces, I don't think I would ask the board not to penalize us for having five or six additional spaces, or seven additional spaces. And then just lastly, as it relates to the overall site in the, in the concrete, it's currently gravel. It's been gravel for 40 years. Our, our task in convincing you that this is a project worthy of approval is to prove to you that this project is not more detrimental, that it's not detrimental to the neighborhood. We have, we are repairing and restoring riverfront area, we're paving that area instead of leaving it gravel, and we're adding significant commercial tax base to the community without any significant negative impact. So, I believe we have hit that mark in not being detrimental to the, to the So I believe we have hit that mark in not being detrimental to the community. Now, could we be more not detrimental? Sure. I mean, if we did something different, we could, but this is our best foot forward. This is the best project that we believe can make the site commercially viable and get the best use of Mr. Bogan's land. And we would ask that you approve it as before you with that paved area in the back. Again, the criteria is that we're not adding harm to the neighborhood, that we are not more detrimental, that this use and that this exception to the buffer rule, to the buffer regulation, again, not to the back, but to the side, is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. So certainly, there is a whole host of things that we could do to be more not detrimental, but we think this is not detrimental to the neighborhood. We think this is a quality project that will enhance the neighborhood without, and the community by increased taxes and ability for folks who have commercial enterprises to perhaps expand from their, taking their vehicle in their driveway to having an actual office and perhaps hiring an employee. We believe that this is, this is a beneficial project to the community, and we would ask that you vote in favor of it, given the project as it stands before you. We're not looking to add any new information or submit any additional plans. This is, that was, that one plan showing the parking spaces, that was the only difference, was for illustrative purposes.
Okay, I have one final question. In your response on page two, you say, "The size of the vehicles accessing the site will be limited by weight."
Correct.
Do you know, can you explain that a little bit?
That would be the front three, and yes. There's a class guide of vehicles. Class one would be 6,000 pounds or less, which would be a mini pickup, a minivan, an SUV. Class two vehicle is categorized as 6,000 and 1 to 10,000 pounds. That would be a minibus, or a full-size pickup, a larger minivan, a step van, a utility van. We anticipate that the limit of the vehicles that would be allowed to park on the upper level of the garage would be limited to class four vehicles. So that max gross weight would be 16,000 pounds, which would essentially be a large walk-in, like van, and a, the Federal Highway Administration categorizes it as a city delivery vehicle. So it'd be less than a school bus, and the size of approximately a large walk-in vehicle of 14 to 16,000 pounds. City delivery, conventional van, landscape utility, or large walk-in. So that would, because the weight limitations would be that 16,000 pounds.
That's for the upper?
Correct.
Portion, and the lower portion would have?
The lower portion wouldn't have any weight restriction due to the, it being on grade.
What size vehicles would go in there?
We anticipate similarly sized vehicles.
Okay.
I have nothing. I mean, again, it's, just to add on that, sorry, but it's limited by the depth of the, of the bays. And the bays aren't significantly deep enough that you can store a vehicle of great weight or length in it. So we don't expect that it'd be a significant operation. Again, we think it's more along the lines of electrical contractor-type vehicle, things of that nature.
Member Reed? Member McCome?
I believe that when this project came up, I said this was a challenging location. And I think what I've heard tonight is you've made it more challenging. You're not making it less detrimental, you're more confused. So the first thing that we did was, what you're trying to do is convert a residential area in a, you know, residential neighborhood into a commercial space. Okay, we can take a look at that. But I think Ms. Santucci put it well, is, you know, what is the best thing to put into a very challenging area? The density of the building that you've created obviously leads to certain things, you know, so for example, you could reduce the impact if you had a less intensive use in terms of your building, four bays instead of six bays. And I would like to make a comment that despite what Conservation Commission says, this is the planning board, so we have rights and rules over special permits, as you know, and I would say that what the planning board wants in terms of gravel, or grass, or paving, you know, outstrips everybody. So I put aside what the Conservation Commission has told you, and we need, if we're gonna do this, we need to focus on what makes most sense for the special permit. So, in a certain sense, you're intensifying your problem. You know, I didn't hear last time that there was gonna be staff people there. I didn't hear last time that we're gonna have trailers carting in, you know, equipment, and we need to worry about the turning radius there. That's not what I heard. And I also heard you say tonight, Mr. Palmucci, "Well, we're gonna have, you know, electricians" or whatever. I don't think electricians are carrying, you know, stuff behind their trucks. So, and I would certainly, when I raised that question about the size of vehicles last time, I don't think I was thinking class four, something substantially less than that, maybe one, maybe two, and certainly, you know, nothing in tow. So, I don't want to belabor this, but I have more concerns tonight than I did last time. And if this is your best plan, you know, it's not compelling. So my suggestion would be to go back and work with the staff and come up with something which, if we like it, okay, we can review it, but it has to be high-quality, less impactful. You're making many transitions. You're asking us to do, you know, multiple things and create multiple waivers and whatever else, based on some, you know, things that you're causing yourself. I think it's disturbing when you talk about Mr. Mahmood. There was an issue last time that he was in discussions with Mr. Bogan to sell the property. That, you know, that's troublesome. So I, you know, I totally discount anything he says. So normally, we would ask, you know, what the neighbors think, but I know Mr. Bogan owns some of the other properties around there, so we have to speak for the neighbors. And as you know, we have the comprehensive zoning in front of us. There are issues in terms of what types of, you know, zoning should be for certain areas. This was a residential piece of property. Could it be converted? Sure. But it has to be done correctly. And, you know, part of what goes also with the zoning stuff is density and, you know, the rules related to the boundaries, and certainly, open space, you're near the water right there. So again, I would defer more to what the planning staff says. You know, we weren't there at the Conservation Commission, we can't speak for them, but certainly, we have a lot of opinions about, I'm gonna call it the quality that should go into projects. And I agree with Member Baker, you know, the building looks better, but, you know, as I said, maybe the building should be less intense. And I think you need to be, define what is gonna be used in that building. Are there gonna be people there? Are you gonna have clients visit? You know, again, the size of the vehicles. I have more questions, like I said, tonight than I did the last time. And, you know, I don't want to prolong it. I would just simply say, you need to do a better job working with the staff, and you need to put a better plan on the table than what I've seen tonight. You know, as the staff said, do we have that drawing? What, you know, we've had this problem in many cases. We don't, if we, we're only as good as the information put in front of us. So if you don't have clean maps and other data that we can look at, we can't evaluate it properly. So, you know, in terms of parking and so on, it has to be clearly identified. So I think you really need to think about, what is gonna go in that building? Who are you trying to attract? And like I said, if every one of your vendors is gonna have, you know, something carrying behind them, that is definitely detrimental to the neighborhood and not in keeping with what we're trying to accomplish. That is a very difficult spot. And you know, if you drive it and you're talking about going in one direction, heavy equipment, I don't know. The people in that neighborhood don't deserve that. So I just think you need to go back and rethink a lot of things. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Member McCome. I appreciate your comments. I just, if I could be granted leave to just make a couple of responses. We're not seeking to change this to commercial zoning. The lot is commercially zoned. It's a split zone. It's residential zoned and commercial zoned. It was only at-
It has been previously residential, and it's flipped and it's flopped.
No, there's a line right through it. A majority of it is residential, a piece of it is commercial. Using the split zone, split lot zoning of the zoning ordinance, we were granted commercial use of the site. I will say that, and when we originally applied, that was how we were proceeding, is that we were allowed to use commercial, I'm sorry, residential standards. It was after consulting with staff that they asked us to take a step back and go before the zoning board to get permission in terms of zoning regulations to use it as a commercial site. But I would suggest, respectfully to the board, a strict application of this, is we wouldn't need that buffer between residential and commercial because it's residentially zoned. So there wouldn't need to be a buffer between two residential properties. We're not seeking waiver of multiple regulations. It's appropriately zoned for the use. We're seeking one waiver, which is the special permit only as it relates to the buffer between Mr. Mahmood's property and this property. So we meet, we meet open space. We meet density. We meet parking. We meet what we should meet. The only, this site plan review, because it's over 500 square feet that this board's voting on, and the one exception to the special, that we're asking for a special permit, is to the 100-foot buffer between a commercial and a residential. And as I said, we've worked diligently with Mr. Mahmood and any other neighbor who's come, and as you know, no neighbors have spoken in opposition of this at either of the hearings here. We do believe that this is a quality project, and I appreciate your input that you're left wanting. But we believe that this, and we feel confident that this is an improvement to the current site.
Okay. Respectfully, I disagree. And again, our role, as you know, is to do the best possible job we can for the neighbors and consistency with all the rules, you know, in case it comes up. Just because you meet the rule doesn't make it good, okay? We want good projects. We want to meet the rules, and we want high quality, always. So respectfully.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments slash point of clarification. I didn't know if you had on any of the plans up there, a plan that had the 100-foot riverfront area noted. The plan I have has like an arrow pointing, but the line is missing, so I'm having a hard time reading where the 100-foot riverfront falls. Or if you could just outline it with your finger on the map.
It's pretty close to, it's pretty close to the street, isn't it? Because it's 200 feet.
Okay. So it's that kind of the corner? Okay.
The only river, the river comes and takes a hard turn here. The only actual spot is here underneath the railroad bridge, but we just-
Grab the mic. All right.
The only spot was right here under the railroad bridge, so when we expanded it out, we just carried the line and pushed it through to incorporate it in there.
Okay. And then on the renditions you had of the new facade, can you put that up again, please? So you had mentioned, did you mention hardy plank siding, or what was gonna be the facade of that? On all the sides?
The front, so that would be viewable from Allen Street.
That would be hardy plank. And then what would be the side, the side buffering, the residential?
The building will be of steel construction, so it would be, on the sides, it would be traditional steel construction. Again, as it relates to the buffer with Mr. Mahmood's residential property, that would be screened by landscaping, and then on the other side is a commercial use, uses over to the side by common-owned property by Mr. Bogan.
And what is the little thing on top?
That's a couple of-
Is it drawn to scale? Is that really, is that really like?
The architect prepared those, so I-
Okay. I was just curious. Is there any sort of lighting proposed on the face of the building?
There'll be no, there'll be no exterior lighting, other than the down-facing lighting over the doorways.
Over the man doors, or the overhead doors, or both?
Man doors.
Over the man doors?
The man doors. And no-
The eyebrow.
And the eyebrow. And there'd be no lighting on the side of Mr. Mahmood's property, facing Mr. Mahmood's property.
Was there any consideration for maybe doing a more, a prettier door for the overhead doors, maybe something that has maybe more of a residential feel, just to try to help that facade look a little more residential? Just a thought. Just trying to think of the fact that we're struggling with, you know, to echo some of McCome's points, you know, I think as a town, we struggle with residential development. This lot, I understand, is split zoned, it had a historic residential use, and it does have commercial use. So, you know, we're gonna effectively be taking some residentially zoned property out of the town's inventory and, you know, at a time where it's, I think it's critical that we look hard at projects that do that. So I think any effort we can do to really make this blend in with the neighborhood, and I think, you know, improving the aesthetics of especially the facade that fronts Allen Street, and also any landscaping improvements that we can do, I think go a long way in helping us feel maybe good about taking some of that zoning, you know, kind of changing that zoning. The 100-foot buffer to residential and looking at that space between, you know, Mahmood's property and this parcel, and, you know, having the building be only 20 feet away from that. I think when we start to talk about landscape buffers and what may or may not be possible, and then looking at property that we might have at the rear that's in a riverfront area, I almost think of it in terms of, well, we might not be able to get so much of a buffer between the residential property, but could we go forward on the site and make it greener somewhere else? And I think along the riverfront at that back area could be a good opportunity to compensate for maybe some of the buffers we're not able to achieve elsewhere. And I think, you know, a lot of the problems we have on some of these older commercial properties in Braintree is you just end up getting over-parking and storage of vehicles that aren't being used, or storage of materials, and it becomes an inspectional problem in trying to make sure that that doesn't happen. You're kind of inviting it to happen with this just big swath of pavement. So I almost wonder if like we could kind of trade some of the considerations, you know, maybe bulk up the residential appearance from the front, maybe put some of that buffer by reducing some of the pavement in the back, and then if you could provide more of a parking layout, something a little more organized in the back, so we can at least understand how that might be used. And then furthermore, the building owner can better self-police how that is being used and parked, and it looks more organized. And I think it's not asking an incredible amount of the developer to consider that, but I think it's kind of trying to meet somewhere in between. So I would really, you know, encourage you to think of maybe the swap, the fact that you can't get that buffer between the residential is maybe trying to do it a little bit more somewhere else. I mean, I think that would be beneficial to the project. The only other comment question I had was- The only other comment question I had was, it looks like the south side of the building is sitting on the edge of a sewer easement, and it says that the sewer easement is shown approximately. So I'm curious as to how you ensure that you don't build the building in the sewer easement? Is there language on the sewer easement that centers it on the actual pipe, and if you know where the pipe is? I just, moving forward, I want to make sure that that was figured out.
That was because an engineer took a plan from a registered land surveyor that showed the sewer easement, and we weren't taking ownership of it. He, the surveyor surveyed it, and that was from his plan, but we call it as approximate.
But that is where, that is where it is.
That's where it was delineated by the surveyor.
I guess I would just want to make sure that the building doesn't end up in that sewer easement.
Right. I think, that's a good point. We also would want to make sure that the building was not built on the sewer easement for our own purposes.
And then, is there any sort of hour restriction on when businesses would be using this facility, when trucks would be coming and going from that? Is it something that could happen at all hours? Like, is, I'm not sure there's a precedence for it, or a requirement for it. It's more a point of curiosity, since it's not your normal business with operating hours, and probably more of a 24-hour type situation. I think maybe we should just, I don't know if you can speak to that aspect of it?
So, next door, I have other garages, and it's typically 7:00, 8:00 in the morning until 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock. It's pretty much a ghost town after that, with the exception of if it's snowing out, there could be some activity.
Okay.
You know, that's it.
Yeah, I think that's it. Thank you.
I can answer one of the concerns. This is not going to be a storage yard, right? I mean, there's going to be other --
No, that's certainly not the intention.
I actually, one of the first houses I had was on that road, so. And I understand what you're doing to it, because it is, that area is kind of dilapidated, so I agree. But just don't make it a storage yard, okay? That's just, that's somewhere it belongs. You know, if you're going to use garages, use garages.
Noted, yeah. That wouldn't be our intention, and I don't think that the tenants who ultimately rent there would want that either.
And I think that's a concern with the, so big in the back, that all of a sudden people drop it off equipment there and leave it at there and stuff.
Certainly.
It's two residents, there is residents across the street and stuff, so you don't want that down.
And I would add, just jumping back to Member Joyce's comment about the front facade, we would certainly be willing to do a more residential door if we can, you know, show this one out there that we could add. We did try to make it, based on Member Baker's comments at the last hearing, we tried to make it much residential as you can for, you know, three large bay doors, but I think that's probably a room, a place where that look can be achieved a little bit better with better doors. We'd certainly be willing to do that. As it relates to the trade-off of the buffer on the side in the back, we feel very strongly that the, again, we're not disturbing the back. We're not, that's in existence the way it is, and I understand we're asking for relief on the side. But we're, our intention from the beginning was to not disturb the back at all. It was only after discussions with the Conservation Commission that we were going to change it at all, from its current gravel makeup to paving it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
What was the rationale of making it paved, at least a gravel, at least a lot of the --
That the debris would flow into the river, in the river area.
They wanted the debris to flow into the river?
They weren't happy with it being, remaining as gravel, if vehicles were going to be back there parking on it. They also wanted us to update the maintenance, for the operation and maintenance plan for the stormwater, to be able to sweep it without, and plow it and all of that, without tearing up any of the gravel that's back there.
I just think paving would be more conducive than being, everything flowing out to the river.
They, paving, they wanted it so that it could, like I said, to be swept. They were afraid that if someone was parked there and their car was dripping oil, it could get into the ground or something like that. It's less apt to do that if it's paved, so.
There's a berm in the back, right?
There's a stormwater quality swale, and then an additional basin at the back corner. So on there is a stormwater, a grass swale, and then here is a stormwater, a basin, so that it can infiltrate and it treats and settles out before it goes out where it goes now. Currently, right now, it's a gravel lot, and any rain or whatever comes across and just goes right out. It's followed, go right up through there, unchecked, into the inadequate. So the stormwater that we've supplied here meets the stormwater management policy. We take the roof runoff and up front, we infiltrate it into chambers. Over in this area, some of the flow for larger storms to the back, and then in the back, as part of that riverfront restoration, we added that 600-square-foot grassed area at the base of that berm, and then that other stormwater kind of, a water quality basin is what we're calling it, that filters the stormwater before it gets out. So that's the improvement that was made. And again, I know we're not necessarily talking about conservation, but when you're in the riverfront area and you're redevelopment, it's a similar standard. You have, the standard is you have to make it better, and that's what we did, and that's why we got the order of conditions.
Right. All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Anything further?
No, I was just, as I was speaking to Member Joyce about the trade-off in the buffers. We feel strongly that the buffer that we're providing in the rear, the additional two-foot buffer area that'll be the restoration area, adds that trade-off. That wasn't our intention. We didn't seek to do that. We didn't want to do that. That was kind of, I don't want to say forced upon us, but that was agreed to with the Conservation Commission in our discussions with them. We would like to keep the entire area the way it was, gravel-topped, but we're not proceeding in that manner at this point. Due to the, again, the topography of the site, we think that that area is necessary for the parking and for the turn radius of the site. So I don't, respectfully, and I appreciate the comments about it, and I don't disagree that that's the way we have approached it in terms of, we're looking for, we're looking for some help here, so we should give something here. But given the topography of the site and the layout, we're constrained, and this is, that I believe is the best we can do in terms of the rear buffer. If we could add more to it, we would gladly do it, but we think the constraints of the site really limit our ability to do so. And in further, it's usable land that Mr. Bogan would have to be giving up to making it unusable in the back, which, again, has a legitimate commercial value to having some additional parking back there. It's, that's an inducement to folks renting out, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion that this matter be continued until a further meeting, giving time for the applicant and staff to work out some of these issues?
That's important. Yeah. Is that a motion?
That's a motion, yes.
What's the date?
October meeting.
I want to say this. You've come a long way, okay? I think, Mr. Bogan, you've come a long way, okay? I'm saying that you're going in the direction, right now, not to work things out is a foolish thing for everybody. I know that area that was, right down the street, was one of the first houses I had. I think working together, we get this done. I understand, everybody gets frustrated at times, we all do, but we move forward.
So there's a motion for October? Is it, is that the best?
Yeah.
October meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, and it's been seconded?
Okay. All available?
Aye.
Mr. Bogan, don't, don't let, don't, just give it time. In October.
We're not consenting to the, we're not consenting, there's been no guidance presented to us in terms of, you want us to increase the buffer, and I appreciate that. We've said the site constrains us. I don't think our, and I mean this with all due respect, I don't think our plans get any better. This is something that we have been working with staff for approximately two years.
Talking physically of the building, we asked you to relook at that, make it more neighborhood-friendly, so there are things that can be changed. So we'd ask you to consider that.
And we, I take very seriously the board's role, and I mean no disrespect. My client's been incredibly frustrated by this, by this process, and feels as though there has been roadblock after roadblock put in the way. If I felt as though there was room for us to move forward, as there was the last hearing, the hearing before that, I would gladly recommend to him that it makes sense to continue the matter and keep working, but we didn't even so much as receive a staff report.
No, I'm saying, we could vote tonight, right?
I mean, there's nothing, we didn't receive a staff report. What are we working off of? I don't, with all due respect, I don't know how we get to a different place.
My comments have been made, Mr. Chairman. I stated that at the last hearing. I was seeking some input from the board. This is a special permit. We held, we opened the hearing within 65 days. We, there is no, I mean, the board can continue it. There is no requirement to make a decision within a certain timeframe unless there's some section of the law that I'm not familiar with. Obviously, we asked for the mutual consent, but I think even without their agreement, I don't think we're under any timeframes unless I'm missing anything. There's no requirement to make a decision within a certain timeframe on a special permit.
I can only tell you, I understand your concerns with the back, I do. I can understand the concerns in regards to worrying that kind of size, you do worry that it's going to turn into a stockyard, so you don't want that.
We've had these problems in the past.
So, I mean, whatever happens, the condition would be that that can't be a storage area. It can't be, and I understand you agree to it, but if down the road, if Mr. Bogan sells it, so it would have to be part of the conditions. Other than that, and I can only speak for myself, I don't have any issues. That's the one issue I would have to make sure it's in the conditions, that that is never going to be used as a storage facility. I just think it looks crappy to me. That's probably not a real good legal term, but.
We would certainly do that. We'd certainly add the more residential feel doors up front. Beyond that, I, as it relates to the buffer in which we're seeking the special permit for, I think we're, we're at our point, where in any negotiation, not that this is a negotiation, because we're seeking your permission, but essentially it's negotiating with staff and trying to find a compromise. We've extended as much as we can extend the authority that we have.
Again, I think, I think one of the, again, I may be wrong, correct me wrong, but I think one of the issues is, again, the temptation to be using that as storage and leaving trucks there and stuff. And I think, again, correct me wrong.
No, that is, that is a huge concern.
And I think one way to avoid that is make it a condition that the vehicles, cars to be parked there, or pickup trucks for people that are working, but not to be kept as for storage of equipment and stuff. Because, you know what? It goes from storing one piece of equipment to all of a sudden, all the equipment's being stored there. And that's when it starts looking really crappy in neighborhoods and stuff, when you don't want that. Because it is a bletch there, and it doesn't look cool.
Yeah. I mean, Mr. Chairman, as this board knows, and I think they've said that they did this just for an exhibit in a presentation, if you don't have an area striped as parking on your site plan, it's not parking. So, you know, there's a lot of things, and it's in the applicant's best interest to have all this information on their plan for clarity. And as this board knows, and I think as Mr. Hardy definitely knows, and Mr. Palmucci, it's in the applicant's best interest to see the conditions before the board votes. There are no conditions prepared, there are no findings prepared, and if the board wanted to vote this evening, it would just be subject to. And frankly, if they want to take that risk, then that's up to the applicant. But we always have dialogue about the conditions, and we talk those through and make those available in advance, so that everybody has a clear understanding of the, you know, the expectations of the decision.
So, based on that, if there was conditions set up that the back cannot be used as storage, okay? Conditions set up that the plans get done with striking? I don't know what else.
We have put several conditions on these types of facilities. You know, there won't be 24-hour activity in the buffer.
No, they can't.
I mean, there's a lot of conditions that go along with, and I think they would want to see them.
I know, no, I know. I'm just saying, one of the, one of the things about 24-hour, no 24-hour thing, sometimes during snowstorms, and I think Mr. Bogan does plowing, does a bit of plowing.
Correct.
There may be during the snowstorm, use, you know, trucks being, I think that's the exception. I think that should be the exception in all industrial areas, because.
Trucks are in and out. Jesus, that just scared me. Trucks are in and out for the plowing, so that's different. But other than that, I just don't see a 24-hour use there. I think it's, and I think what he indicated was it would be from 7:30 to 4:30 or 5:00. I have no issue with that. And listen, I understand his frustration. He's someone that wants to move forward, and I don't blame him. The board's trying to do something to work with him.
I appreciate that.
I'd ask that he consider not doing what I think he wants to do, and work with us as far as those conditions, and read the other conditions, and we'll probably move this forward at the next meeting.
I believe we can do that. I mean, I think that, given those parameters, that's something that can be accomplished. May I ask of the chair, I know there was a motion, it was seconded. I don't, I think I was, I turned my back and was talking to my client. Was it?
There was a vote, yeah.
There was a vote, and it was approved to be continued, okay.
Yeah. And to be perfectly frank with you, if you asked for the vote, I probably would have fought you on that.
No, that's fine. It's not my purview to ask for the vote.
Yeah.
The board's purview.
I just didn't want to, because.
They want to take a vote, right?
We're not that far away.
Okay. And I will, so we think, for all intents and purposes, I will stay as long as you want me to, but I think we're done. I will certainly talk to my client, and I'll reach out to staff tomorrow as to whether or not.
Well, we haven't finished asking a question.
No, no, I know. That's why I'll stay as long as you want. I get paid by the hour, so.
Yeah? Okay, we're all done, right now. All right, Attorney Fuhrman, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the board. Appreciate your time and consideration.
So, are you signing this, counsel?
I will, if I can, I would discuss that with you tomorrow after. I can't sign without knowing whether or not my client authorizes me to sign. He left, so.
Let him, I don't want to see you get a jackpot there, so please talk to him.
Yeah, so I will talk to him, let him know what transpired after he left the room, and I'll reach out to the.
Yeah, we'll try and sign it.
Okay, anything else?
Motion adjourned.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, let it not be. All available?
Aye.